So thank you for the chance to get everybody at this one time an overview of what we're going on tonight. Thank you for all coming out to listen. The, uh, we first brought this up about three months ago. I mean, we've been kind of telling people all summer when they came by and watched the barn going down and watching it back up. What are you gonna do? We kept saying, yeah, I think you're gonna do apartments. Um, so it's kind of been a conversation for a while. The official, um, pre-application, I think, was, uh, well, we have, it's been about three months that we've been having this conversation officially. And I think people brought up a lot of very good questions right away. You know, what's gonna happen to property values? How do you screen for people? How do you know that you're gonna get decent people there? How many people? Um, what's happening to taxes? Uh, what, what might be happening to traffic? Is this gonna be all senior housing? Right? So a lot of good questions came up and hopefully we're gonna answer. We've answered some of them already, but hopefully we'll answer more as, as we go along. The, uh, this, this decision to do this or the, the effort to do this is really driven by work that the planning board was doing last year on the comprehensive plan. And when we looked at the, um, need for housing in the town of Canton, it was pretty high. There really were very few apartment buildings and there was very few affordable apartment buildings. Uh, now there's a couple apartments over the Canton Variety and there's a couple over the post office and there are a few homes around the few homes around town where people are renting out a home. Uh, but there's no real apartment buildings. And I know we've had a couple of people in town who are just looking for a place to rent and can't really find a decent place that's clean, safe, and affordable. When we looked at Maine Housing Data, the top is Oxford County. And if you, this is the number of people changing population over the last few years. So in Oxford County as a whole, the pink is senior citizens, right? So you've got, we've got a huge rise in senior citizens. I would have to say I crossed that line last year, um, when ARP started sending me stuff and then social security started sending me things like, you need to think about this stuff coming up. I'm like, oh my God. Um, and the number of young people, which is a far left, right, was going down as a state or as a county. If we look at Canton in the last same time period, we've had the same increase in pink, right? So more senior citizens. We've had a pretty significant decrease in the, like twenty-five to forty-five, that group of that, that kind of young families, which is kind of interesting because we've had an increase in housing. Uh, we had more families coming in, we had more kids coming into the school system, but over time, that number still has gone down. And we've had a slight increase of the far left of the really, really young people. When we look at what it means to have affordable housing, and as soon as you put that word on it, some people call it affordable, most people are right away to low income, low income, low income. I'm like, well, let's look at it from an affordability standpoint. If you look at, um, housing costs about four years ago in the state of Maine or in Canton, which is the blue columns over there, and this is census data. Uh, the average median value of a home with the the time, a whole to people in Canton. If you look at rent, um, sixty-eight percent of the time, rent was unaffordable, was unaffordable. That was costing somebody more than thirty percent of their income to pay for rent. Which, to me, at that point, is buy a house, right? Because a lot of money that you're putting out for something that you can't have, except, as we all know, house prices are skyrocketing, have been skyrocketing in the last four years. If you look at last year, twenty-twenty-three, which is the most recent census data and state of Maine data that's out there, there is, um, the median value of a home has gone up from a hundred and forty-one thousand to a hundred and eighty. If you say, for Canton, it's good, our house prices are going up, valuations are going up. Um, the percent of time that a house is out of range of somebody's price has dropped for a single-family home to twenty-three percent. Now, this is just the data. Now, you could look around, you'll go, really? Is that really what's happening? Um, at the same time, the, the rent costs in the town Canton have gone up. Now eighty-five percent of the time, rent is out of, is not affordable for people who want to try to rent. I think it's probably because there isn't any more smaller units coming available. You could rent a house if you can afford it. Right? But there's not a lot of apartments available. So right now, eighty-five percent of the time in Canton, you, a person couldn't afford to rent unless they paid more than thirty percent of their income for that rent. Which it doesn't leave much left for a lot of other things. So that was kind of the driving force for a lot of what we're doing. When we talked about affordable rental, uh, people asked a few questions like, are you just giving people a handout? Um, you're gonna make a lot of money if you do these apartments. Affordable housing means that you're, nobody's giving a renter any cash, not any money for them. Uh, and what it means in Maine is that the rent is restricted. So a landlord can't be making a lot of money from a renter. You have to keep it at a certain limit, and that is a statewide limit. So it's not like all of a sudden you can say, oh, I'm gonna start raking in the cash from these renters. You have to maintain it. For the state of Maine, if, um, under the Maine Housing Law Regulations, for Oxford County, you have to meet, uh, to qualify to live in an affordable housing, um, location, you have to make eighty percent or less of area median income. So for Oxford County, if you're a single person, that is forty-six thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars. That's eighty percent of the Oxford County area median income. So a single person who's making forty-six thousand dollars a year could qualify to live there. If you're two people, uh, it's fifty-two thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Right? And so you could qualify. My son, who's living up in Bangor, kept saying to me, I qualify, I qualify. And he's working full-time, has a job. Um, but he would qualify under the one limit because he makes less than forty-six thousand dollars a year. Um, the maximum gross rent, the maximum you could charge for a one-bedroom unit under the twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-four, um, program is one thousand, two hundred and thirty-six dollars a month. So that's the most you could ever charge, and it's, it's capped. You can't charge anything more than that. And that has to include, um, heat, electricity, water store, and internet. So that has to be all included for all utilities.
I got a question. And that's because it's gonna be labeled affordable housing that you cannot, it's gonna be capped on, on the rent?
That's correct.
So
That if you, if you
What if you, what if you sold the building? And is it still gonna be affordable?
If you
Most of the things I've run into is when, um, a development like this or apartments go in, they, um, make you hang on to the property for ten years. So the, uh, builder doesn't sell it, and the next person come in and jack up the rent.
Correct. If you apply, um, and when, when we first did this, Maine Housing had not opened up a rural affordable rental housing program for twenty-twenty-four. Um, they did it like two years ago and they didn't do it last year. Um, they opened one up about a few weeks ago, right? An application due in another few weeks. So if you, if we participate in that program, and that program, which we'll talk about in a second, um, has a one-time bucket of money to help with some of the infrastructure costs. Right? You have to keep it in affordable housing for thirty-five years, forty years, forty-five years.
So there is, there is.
Yeah, it has to stay there. If you take that money.
Even, even if it's sold?
Yep, yep. It goes with the building, it goes with the project. So we look at that, I mean, we're working on the numbers right now. You take that one thousand, two hundred and thirty-six times eight units, and then you subtract all of your costs for electricity, heat, snowplowing, any other borrowed money that you have to borrow, you know, the payment on that to cover that up. And we're like, can we actually make any money at all? Maybe. And if so, it's not gonna be much. You know, and so you're not, somebody said to me, you're doing this to get rich. Uh, yeah, okay. That's really not why we're doing it.
Why is that a bad thing? Fair profit on something? Why is that a bad thing?
Well, it's probably not.
Don't be an answer.
Um, I said, when we first talked about this, I said to Rick, if I ever do decide to retire, I'd like a little travel money, like that was my hope. So we, we, we're not even sure we didn't get there yet uh, in this project, but, um, we should have that settled in the next couple of weeks. Um, if you think about who those potential renters could be, in, in our school district, we pay our starting salary for a teacher, a kid out of school with a college degree is forty thousand dollars a year. So they would qualify. And being single-bedroom units, our intent is to use this for, I mean, the people who would normally come into there are gonna be seniors or starting out young people, right? You're not, you can't get families because it's only a one-bedroom unit. You're not gonna get a lot of people in the middle with a family. Um, now we'll see, there may be middle-aged, single people that want to go in there, but, uh, or middle-aged couples, but you're not gonna, you can't with two bedrooms, with only one bedroom, have families in there. Um, in medical, in our district, Maine House, Runford Farming, deliver more South Paris, their average medical assistant makes thirty-nine to forty-five a year. And retiree in our area, the average is thirty-two hundred per month. I'm like, I don't know, too many people who are making thirty-two hundred a month off their social security. So, but they, so they would qualify, right? So there's a lot of people in the target market who qualify. Um, and we've had several people who have called and said, hey, we heard you're putting in apartments, can we get on a waiting list? So I think there's a, and we know the demand is there. Um, there've been recent market studies done for other communities that are looking at apartments that look at actual demand. Um, there's employers who can't hire people because they can't find a place to put them. Um, so I feel like we're gonna have a good pool of people to draw from, potentially.
Question. Is it the same screening process for the, the applicants as a normal rental? Would it be the same screening process?
Uh, well, we, we expect to be pretty stringent on that screening process. So, uh, everybody goes through a legal background check, they go through, um, you know, is there any arrest records? Have there been any other police incidences? Have, are they paying their rent somewhere else? You know, are they behind any payments? You do credit checks, right? So you do all kinds of checks on the person to make sure that they're a good person to have in there. Um, so they check for background check, employment, rental history, et cetera. And then we want to follow up with an individual interview. So we would know who these people are before they come in.
I have one question. Why did you decide to, to make affordable housing where it is?
Well, because we feel like I should have come up here, because that's what we were dealing with. It was really because the barn was collapsing, and it's a huge barn, and we needed, we had, it was gonna cost us a huge amount of money to have it torn down. Um, and there, we had an engineer come and look at it, and they said, you know, the, the bones, the post and beam, the real framework is amazingly good shape for the age it is in. And so, is there any way to save it? And a lot of people came by and said, boy, we'd love to have you save that barn. We like the barn. It's, it's been there for a long, long, long time. Can we somehow save the barn? Um, and we couldn't really afford to turn it back, just to put it back as a barn. And actually, after I spent about six weeks emptying all this stuff, I hate to say the bad words, the crap out of the barn that's been accumulating for almost twenty-four years. Um, I thought, I don't really wanna make it a barn again because I know it'll just start filling back up with stuff. And so what else could, we weren't sure what else to do with it. I mean, we had someone who approached us about a restaurant. We looked at that. I'm like, restaurant would have been a great idea, but they decided they didn't want to do it, and we're not, we're not set up to do a restaurant. Um, we looked at a wedding venue, uh, but then Boondock Farms opened up their place. Um, and so this can't really need two big wedding venues. I don't know. And do we really wanna run, uh, you know, do what it takes to kind of run a whole wedding venue? Um, so this is kind of what we evolved around to. Um, so to, I mean, let me, I guess, let me just kind of, uh, so the, uh, somebody did ask earlier, like, what kind of experience do you have doing this? And really, we've had one rental property since two thousand and seven, so for seventeen years, we've been renting another piece of property that we have. Um, and we had turnover over the years. Um, our last two renters have been there for over ten years, or twelve years combined. Um, and they both have gone on to buy single-family homes in the community. So one is bought over in Peru and one they bought in Canton. So, um, the intent there is, and that was a, a, Rick would shake his head whether that's a good experience or not, because we did have, we had a couple of, you know, seventeen years, we had a couple of bad renters. Um, people who like trash things and left things a mess kind of stuff. Um, but for the most part, there are people who had a need. We were, we rented that well below mortgage rates. And for, it was intended to give people a leg up. You know, if you could stay here for a year or two, save some money, and then move on to something else, is that useful for both us and you? Yeah, I mean, it occupied the property. They did pay, you know, nominal amount of rent, which covered the taxes, you know, eventually paid off the property. Um, but nobody was, every time people hear it, that was a three-bedroom unit that we were renting for five hundred dollars a month. And so then you pay your own, you know, the profit on driveway. But it was still a good deal for most people who were living there. Um, also, before we jump into this, I did, um, I, last year, we started talking about it. I started signing up for all these free classes. I called, um, Abcog, which is Angus, Scottville Valley Council of Governments. And they pointed me to all these free workshops that were all about, you know, how do you manage properties? How do you finance properties? How do you, um, if you're doing some, a huge project, not this size, but what are low-income housing tax credits and how does that work, right? So there's a lot to learn, which I knew nothing, right? So I'm soaking up all my information, all these things. Uh, but what does it take to manage them? What kind of reporting do you have in the state for these kind of properties? So all that, um, we took through these courses. Um, just to get more confident that we would know what we're doing, and we're doing. We still will probably hire a property manager to do most of that kind of paperwork upfront, because we're really not, again, I don't wanna be a full-time job managing that, but the fact that it's sixty feet from my house, I feel like with last year, we went, we looked at a bunch of, um, affordable housing projects in Dixfield. We went to, I think, four different buildings and looked at all these different projects, and some of them were just so poorly managed. I mean, I went to some that there's a huge hole in the ceiling, and I said, you shouldn't be living like this. It's like, oh, that's been here for eighteen months. It's like nobody fixed a leak that had happened in a hole in the ceiling. Trash piling up outside, right? So we saw what a poorly managed property looks like. And that's something we don't wanna do, right? And I think the fact that it's so close to our home and that we can are right there and stay on top of those kinds of things, that you wouldn't necessarily at another project. So just a quick look at the actual quote subdivision, which is the big flex of the thing. Um, it would take our lot is that whole big square and you can't see the cursor, sorry. Um, the barn is the box, it's up in the corner. Uh, and so we're right now planning to parcel off that lot there, which is just a fraction under one acre, like point nine, I mean, something acres. So it takes ten acres, knocks off one acre. Um, we looked at all the Canton ordinances that impact the project. So it impacts, certainly subdivision ordinance. Um, and normally, if you're just parceling off one lot, you don't have to go through a subdivision permit, but because you're adding dwelling units, they're adding eight dwelling units. That puts it under the subdivision ordinance. Um, uh, the select, uh, planning board recommended that we also look at the floodplain management ordinance, just because there's things in there that have to do with water and runoff and drainage, even though we're not at risk of flooding on the hill. Um, housing and then a lot size ordinance is our, is the town standard ordinance around how big did your lot have to be? How far do you have to be from the neighboring lots? All those kinds of things, so all those have to apply. And because it's gonna be a potentially a rental project, a commercial ordinance applies. Um, so
Does that mean a separate deed for that barn?
That whole property will go on its separate deed, yes.
Barn is? So does that mean you can't subdivide the lot you cut off?
You mean that one acre lot?
No. In the future, the lot you cut off, are you able to subdivide?
Oh, the nineties, you'd have to put another subdivision in ordinance, unless you just take one lot off.
So the barn has been on a separate deed?
No, it's, uh, deed has been written up.
I'm asking you if the barn has a separate deed to it now?
Not yet. The deed is written, it will be filed. If, if the ordinance go, if the approval goes through, we'll file them.
So then in the future, can you subdivide that other lot?
The other nine acres, you'd have to go through another subdivision permit.
But you can only subdivide a lot once.
Without doing a subdivision permit. Once you have a subdivision, you would have, you can apply for another subdivision permit. Correct. Uh, so to, uh, Mrs. Seek's point, this is why we started doing this, and I think people said, oh, we didn't realize it was that bad because the trees were hiding. But I could look at it in my backyard every day and watch it start to lean a little bit uphill, a little bit uphill. I'm like, it's not gonna last the winter. It's like, ah, it's not gonna go. Um, but what we discovered, um, when we talked to some construction people and barn people and engineers, is the original base piece was built in two separate sections. The front and back sections were built at two different times. One, they think is over a hundred years ago, one is probably in the early nineteen hundreds. Um, and then this long extension on the side, it was a whole separate addition that may have been a chicken coop at one point, but it was only about five feet wide, ran the entire length of the barn. Um, and that's the piece that was collapsing. So like, that was, the good news was it wasn't the, the main structure, it was this little addition off to the side. It just looked really bad. Uh, and was it upstairs in there? I know we had kids sometimes who were like, oh, upstairs. I'm like, we're not to go up there. Don't even go anywhere near that. It was getting pretty dangerous. Um, what we talked to was people who were experts in barn rehabilitation. I, if I seen their sign out there, the barn right, um, he comes from the other side of Norway. Um, but we went to a couple of properties that he had done in the past and looked at some of the work they'd done. They did a really good job on barns, and they really knew what they were doing. He was very, um, good about saying, oh, once we do this and do this and this, you know, we can custom make you these brackets, they're gonna do this and, you know, raise the whole first floor up to a certain level, level everything out. Um, so they redid the whole foundational pieces here, put in new footers, all kinds of new brackets. Um, I was so excited by that. That was like, and there's no, last time it rained, there was no water running underneath the barn. We've got all the water directly away from the barn, which is all great. Um, they certainly tore off that whole side, they rebuilt. You, you can't really see along that foundation there is a stone foundation on that side of the barn that goes about three-quarters of your way down. Um, if you look at the, this is the second floor, uh, before they finished zipping off and framing in the sides, because we still had some daylight up there. Um, so all the, when they just got the frame pieces leveled, I was out of town for work and they sent me a text like, we just leveled the entire building, like they were so excited. They finally got there, the workers, um. And so we then replaced floor that had to be replaced, they leveled off everything on the floor, um, raised the first floor kind of ceiling pieces up so that everything's over seven feet tall. Um, because there was some conversation, you could only rent to really short people on the first floor for a while because the, the ceiling was pretty low. Um, so that's the second floor, looking east and west, and, um, those apartments are gonna have the high ceilings, which is gonna make them really nice. Um, the first floor has just been framed in, um, new subflooring foot in. Uh, and of course, the sides, sides are all buttoned up. And if you've been down there, it's in the last couple of days, they have finished, um, kind of buttoning up the peaks at both ends. And I think they're gonna stick, they found one or two spots on the roof, um, that they're probably just gonna tarp for the winter because we don't want any water getting in at this point. So that's kind of the stopping point. Um, the potential look, and again, this is a, a draftsman rendition. You know, Rick has said all along, I don't want a red barn, don't want a red barn. So we haven't seen, we haven't actually seen samples of siding to decide what kind of siding, what color siding, that kind of thing, but, um, potentially, it would look like this. I mean, the layout is correct. Um, at the back would be similar with the garage door at the bottom there. You can, you see that in black, um, to, because that's all your AC is gonna be accessible underneath.
So one side of the building be ADA accessible, the other, the rest of the building can not be?
Yeah, one unit out of eight, uh, would be ADA acceptable. And if you go with Maine Housing, if, you know, Maine Housing actually lets you into their program and does all that kind of stuff, um, you have to put in a, um, electric car charging station in the parking lot, et cetera, and you can't use any fossil fuels. So we've talked to two companies about putting solar uh, on the roof so that all the units would be solar driven, solar powered as well.
Go fossil fuel.
That's right. So no oil, no propane. It's gotta be electric.
Can I, I have a question. Through, they say housing, they're requiring you to put a charging station in?
They have to put in the plumbing, the piping, I guess. You don't have to actually put the station in yet, but the piping is the one.
Both cars are expensive. You know what I mean?
I know. I know. They said you just have to run the wire, and so if you, if you need one, you can put one in. You can't really see that from me, uh, but the general layout is just quarter in the building. So four on the first floor and four on the second floor. Uh, and each unit has, uh, like one open space, combined kind of kitchen, living room, and then a fully closed-in bedroom, bathroom. So that's kind of where we are at this point, and I think in the application, we've asked the planning board to approve up to eight units because we're still living on the financial piece. If we could figure out how to get, make it work overall financially with fewer units, we would do that. We're still playing with the math to see if that's gonna work. Because if it's bigger units, you could charge a little bit more, but you have fewer of them, is that all gonna play out in the math? Um, so that's where we are at, at the moment. Questions?
So the, the ordinance, or the permit that you're looking for is max eight apartments? So you could do four apartments, like, you know, super long install, and then later you can do four more on top if you wanted to, right?
Potentially. I mean, if you, if we apply for the Maine Housing Funds, those are due in a few weeks, that application, um, it's, I don't know, yeah, they're, it's hard to know. I went to a workshop, uh, in Augusta a couple of weeks ago, and they basically said, hey, we've got this one pot of money, and there's right now a lot of applicants for it. So everybody gets rated on different things, like readiness, are you ready to go? Um, they wanted you to have, we didn't, which we didn't know until this last round, like about a week ago. We didn't know that, two weeks ago, we didn't know that you, they really are wanting you to have an average of one and a half rooms. Right? So we, can we do three one-bedrooms, three two-bedrooms? Yeah. So we're still looking at those options back and forth, but that, those decisions have to get made.
So are you saying it could be two bedrooms?
It could be. I mean, I talked to someone yesterday, we're looking at revising some of the numbers to do that. Um, that might be six units and then eight. But I don't know if we can, this is like, this is like ninety-five percent of the way down the pipe. I don't know if we can change forces of the stream this fast. So they didn't intend to use all municipal water, all municipal sewer. So it would be on the town water, on the town sewer.
Where's the parking?
Oh, parking is? I'm trying to write picture. So I didn't put it in the swim, sorry. Hold on, I took it out of this presentation.
So it's not right on the, where our side?
It would be, it could be right on the side. Yes.
And that'd be, I mean, or what would you trust in that? Or?
The gray area is talking about grading.
Yeah, so there is gonna be, we get to the slope of the land, it's gonna have to have a retaining wall. Yeah, it's a pretty big retaining wall. So we talked to a couple landscaping people as well as an engineer to look at that. And we're discussing how to make that kind of a terrace retaining wall so that we can put plantings along there, so at least it looks nice. And, um, if you notice, there's little pine trees along the upper piece of that, that's so we can put some vision of cleaning something to block the privacy for the neighbors, because they're gonna be downhill. And if you're raising up people on the second floor apartment, it'd be easy for them to be able to look into somebody else's backyard. Then they're, we're trying to put some things in there to help that. Four, four is eight. I think they, we budgeted for twelve, um. I don't know that we need all those, but I think they're going to need to call. Potentially. We did have, um, the, uh, town road form and take a look at the drainage system. There is a culvert that runs from the Wayne Wright's house, which is across the road to the right. To that, I can't point to the same thing. It looks kind of like a long cigarette there. Yeah. That thing, um, is, uh, gonna be, like, you know, when you drive down Staples Hill now, there's grates and all the, like, water runoff, rainwater runoff goes through those grates into the district, there'll be a collection bucket like that under the ground there. Because right now, that pipe comes over and just dumps into that side lot of ours. Um, especially in the spring. It doesn't do it all year round because it really is only in the spring or during a super heavy rains.
And help protect runoff into the way, potentially?
Yeah. Well, right now it goes off into the ground, it sinks into the ground. So now we'll go through that long pipe and go to a retention spot at the back. Like a lot.
Which is not right there.
Correct. So we went underneath the parking lot and come out at the back. So we're talking about, can you make a little water feature out of that? Like, a few times a year that it's running, it doesn't run all the time, but, uh, not this past spring, but a year ago in the spring, when there was all that super, super heavy rain, and that culvert across the street was plugged up. I mean, that thing was running, you know, quite a while, as well as right down.
Sure.
Questions? Yes, ma'am.
Have you considered, because I know it's a big expense, what you did to, to have to fix up the barn, but do plussing it out and, or make it into a one-family house and selling it that way to recoup your money? And we're looking at zoning to, um, look at increasing affordable housing throughout the town.
I know that the Comprehensive Plan Committee is looking at the ten-year strategic plan for the town, and there's a conversation about where else could you do all kinds of interesting things for the town? What about a community center? What about apartments? What about some kind of a retail area? Yeah, what about single-family homes, right? Other stuff that might be affordable? Um, that's gonna be, even if you started, even if the comprehensive plan gets voted in in June, you start on that work right away, you're talking like three years down the road, I think, very early.
Well, we could do zoning without comprehensive plan. Well, we could do zoning without comprehensive plan. That is correct.
It could be done.
I don't know. I just think that we're changing the characteristics of an entire neighborhood. And. I need to tear, put roofs down here to move away from multi-united buildings and now one is following me, so.
With the potential of more, because I, I didn't realize that since. You have it as a subdivision that you can keep dividing, so how many times can you do that?
No, any, anybody in town can subdivide a lot with the subdivision.
If they started with a subdivision.
Now you can do, um, and I'm wrong in here. I think you can do. Three, is it three lots? You can take any lot and turn it from one and turn it into three without having to do a subdivision. If you go to more than three, then you have to file a complete subdivision plan.
Yeah.
So, so three.
Have you read the numbers on, sell it as a, um. Mansion at this point?
Well, I know somebody said to us, you should downsize from your house and move into the barn. I'm like, the barn is bigger than the house. So.
Or duplex it. Now it's two houses.
Potentially. I mean, yeah, I mean, we have a couple of weeks to apply. If we don't get an application, if you don't. Earn the one for main housing, then we have like Plan B and Plan C, which would be something like that. Yeah. Yes, sir.
I don't know. I think there's other, I mean, we can look at other areas. Sarge.
Correct me if I'm wrong. From what you understand, I can say a lot can buy it three times without applying for subdivision.
Oh, hold on. I have it open. Oh, no, I don't. I closed it now.
Three times.
Yeah, that's.
No matter how, many times you subdivide.
It is, there is, now the regulations.
What is it? Point nine acres to, to be able?
No, our housing minimum lot size origin is a certain number of four feet. And so that lots. That's it. And requirements.
I think this is good for argument. I just asked a question that you know. One other question I have, what is going to prevent this from being a way to Brookside with grandparents living there with grandchildren?
Yeah, I think it's just have, part with just having the oversight right on premises. It's going to be a key piece of it. Trying to get to the definitions here. Um. Just getting, I'm trying to get to the definition. Subdivision, subdivision means a division of a tract or parcel of land into three or more lots within any five year period. Um, the definition applies whether the division is accomplished by sale, lease, development, buildings, or otherwise. So division also includes the division of a new structure or structures on a tract or parcel of land into three or more dwelling units within a five year period.
With the exception of if you had a parcel of land and you clear cut it. You can't do, you can't do a subdivision on that clear cut land for ten years. Which I believe is in there. I just, just sorry.
So that the lot that's in between me and you now, we've been putting the garage.
Maybe garage, but that's not a subdivision.
You can do that, but like you, yeah, you, you wouldn't, you could subdivide it, uh.
You can put garage there, but you can't put a garage.
Right. Um, you could put an apartment over there. You can without subdividing it. Yeah, yes. I had, because we've talked about selling the house for our son, we moved into the garage.
We did that. It's impressive. Where some people are selling the houses now.
Yeah.
Because of.
No, that's not true. You won't, you would have to prove that to me.
To say, I'm sorry, what did you, what were you saying, Jody? I didn't understand what you were saying. I'm sorry.
I know, though, both birds put their house on market.
For what? Oh, 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 did we do? Yeah, I'm not seeing that. I didn't know. And I, I'm sorry, Mrs. Epi, you had a question?
So in the application, it says noise levels are managed to normal resident levels. The problem is the town does not have a noise building. And so how is that going to be enforced?
That's a great question. Um, assuming just because we're that close, we can enforce that. Because we're on premises instead of having a management company that's, you know, an hour and a half away and they have no way.
But who's going to measure the decibel levels?
I think we know what's acceptable and not acceptable. I mean, there's times that we've had partying in the backyard and what we know it's not forever, we know it's not going to get out of control.
I know, but that's a neighbor versus a unit of eight units, who possibly gives sixteen people a cluster of pets.
Well, that's a good question.
When you're rental lease agreements, most of the time, and you can put it in there, there's a blur about, um, having peaceful. Peace, I can believe they say peace and harmony, some type, and that also covers noise. Um, there have been people affected because of too much noise, because they weren't allowing the neighbors to have.
Peace and harmony?
Yeah. Yeah, that's an applicable.
Who will enforce?
The landlord, uh, either the landlord will or the management companies or the landlord hires.
But who sets the noise decibel level?
There's no decibel level that's defined. If it's an annoyance and there's complaints, that's grounds for enforcing.
We, the, the plan board did draft in noise ordinance a couple of years ago, which was never enacted, uh, but in there, there are some levels. We could certainly look at that and see about putting that into the lease agreement that said, you know, these would not exceed these levels. After a certain time of day or night.
And can be evicted for it. People have been evicted for it.
Yeah, and I think he won't write the, you and Rick.
I married a man with two first names.
Sorry. Um, I think you've done a great job presenting your program or your plans. And I know there's a lot of work that's been involved behind it. My biggest concern is. How it's going to impact our neighborhood. Um, are we opening a Pandora's box? Will it be the beginning of more apartments being built? And I am curious, does it affect the value of homes that are already there when you start putting apartments in? I, I didn't hear the answer to that when you mentioned it.
I mean, I know we've looked at both ways. You can certainly find examples of cases where adding apartment buildings, uh, in, in a residential area. Degraded the value of properties. And we found examples where they raised the value of properties. So I, I think it depends on how well they're run and how well they're managed and how well it's integrated into the community. How nice the property looks, all the consequences. So it depends, right? And I know that, I mean, for us, this is our, I mean, our home is our biggest investment as well. Right? And so we don't want to do anything that's going to downgrade that property value.
I'm speaking from someone who lives in some with Brookside, right? Um. I sold the house there. I don't think it affected my property value. Um, I don't remember having, having noise problems while I was down there. I think most of the residents in a housing building like that. Take care of the people around them. They put up with that. Stop and, you know.
Most of the people that, a lot of people you talk to, they don't even know that we didn't work side is down there. And so I've been there for ten years now and one person, yeah, I know. One person in that time has been affected because of noise or annoyance. One other person was affected for not following the rules. That's it for ten years. And very, yeah, um, I, I lived there for two years before there was even an open apartment. They're in, it's, you know, we, we don't have, we don't have a problem. Our neighbors are our neighbors. We, we keep the place nice. We try to take care of each other and. You know, it's, I, I enjoy. Living there and I live in the thru, the rent department looks out over the water. So I tell people I assure some property. You go.
Get off your taxes.
One more thing I. One, one thing I want to mention is if let's say you, she decided to go. Duplex or condo way, and now you've got, let's say, three condos in there that you've sold. And now you have a noise problem, you can't evict them. They bought the property, they own the property. So it'd be no different than if, if she's even sold her whole house and someone else bought it. And they have junk cars all over the place and they're having parties every day. Right.
And at that point, you know, to the family, you complain, this is why our, our waiting room, it's just like, if the neighbors are the same thing.
Yeah, so it's, but, but, but in this situation. If their tenants and they're causing these problems. They can be evicted. If they own the property, the, the towns aren't going to make themselves an ass. Cause they're, they're not following guidelines. They're going to give them a thirty-five dollar fine or a fifty dollar fine. Cause they didn't clean up their yard or they were loud or the cops may get called, but. You, you can't get rid of that, that issue if they own the property as well. Whereas if they're a rental and they're having these problems, I'm sorry, we, we're going to evict you and then you get them out of the property. So.
Typically people buying in the single family neighborhood like that typically.
Right.
Well, and I think I would say townhouses or condos or something, something that that would be the Plan B. Absolutely.
The only reason why I'm bringing this up, it's not because I. It's just that I'm, I live right next to it. And so I'm very concerned about it. And, um, I was reading in this residential real estate pricing. And it says that they have found that homes with a view of a lake show a doubling of value when compared to similar homes without a view. So you just have to consider also that that will also bring the value of your property down. I, that's my only property. I have no other property. Okay, so I, this is personal for me. And the other thing is I don't know how much this project is costing. You know, we don't, we don't know how it's full impact our, our communities. I don't know if. If we increase the solid waste in that, in that area, do we have to increase? Uh, another dumpster in the, you know, the way where we put our waste. We have a volunteer fire department. And if we have a unit that, uh, subdividing me in there, do we have enough of our volunteer firemen to apply the fire here to the fire? You know, it's cool, though, we're going to have children there. For each child is ten thousand dollars per child and on, on average. That the taxpayer has to pay. And so these are questions that I have. I don't know if this, an EPA has done an erosion testing on our lake. To see if nothing has gone into our lake. And so if, if, if I sound a little concerned, I guess. I understand your concerns, but the other way of looking at that is. This is going to be increased tax burden to the town. So if there is an increase in, say, the solid waste fund. You are going to have another tax base to help offset that. Where's the tax running the conversation? That building is clearly going to be worth more as whatever she ends up living being than it was after all of that.
Easy here.
Well, I mean, I don't know that eight people are gonna necessarily. Put an undue burden on our sewer system, which I think is underutilized. Uh, same thing with the water district, right? We know we're underutilized on water capacity. Um, so I mean, the intent was to use municipal water and sewer purposefully to help use up those. Give more users to those two systems. I'm hoping, and then with sprinkler systems built in, which is a requirement, uh, of a building like that, you can't, uh, meet out of fire department. If there's a fire, they'd have to show up. There's likely, what if it was a barn, just like they would if there was. Any other structure. But.
Hopefully, the eight people that show up. Four or five of them will join the fire department and they'll all be on.
Well, there you go.
Well, it affects the water pressure going up the hill, because that was our concern, because we're on the end of that.
Well, maybe Sean could answer that. We've talked about having.
Really moistened?
Yep, in pump house, uh. So I would back the system anyways. Is that pump, does it pump up water from that station? From Jeff's house, I don't know if he's here or not, but. And Jeff's house pumps up. Okay. The reservoir, from a reservoir, it's ragged a few down. Diane's going to put a two inch line from the main to her house and boost the pump. And the water is pumped from the pump house now from the treatment plant up to the reservoir. And then it's pumped from the reservoir that building that.
Gravity fed.
Gravity fed.
So we've talked about putting a pump off that line into the, into the barn houses, so they'd have enough water pressure. And I know Mrs. Saker was concerned because her water pressure is already marginal, um, down the hill. And so if it's possible, we could potentially put a pump.
You're doing bench ones. Five, that can, that's the most three hundred and sixty-six dollars.
There you go. I'll put that in my spreadsheet. Is another three hundred and sixty-six dollars a year, is it for? A what? A quarter for the sprinkler, if you have a sprinkler system, which you have to do. I'll write that down.
And maybe you could just run out to like camper trailers and boats and stuff for storage.
They were, yeah, they're on a launch.
The other place, yeah.
No.
I mean, the idea of townhouses or condos is another option that we put that, and that would really be Plan B.
Any other questions?
Yeah, my question was about water in the sewer going upstairs. So the existing pipe or plumbing, that's all, could you go?
Yeah.
The additional flushers digging out.
No.
Upset the works going down the hill.
No, the big excitement was the, uh, road foreman, because that pipe coming across the road right now, the Wayne Wright's, our line, he thinks is way undersized. Um, and he's like, if we're going to have to like do any adjustments on your end, we might as well fix that one at the same time. So he was pretty happy that that was going to happen.
So has anybody done any, uh, calculations on the pipe sizing? I, apparently they must have done some to say that another eight units isn't going to set pressure. But, um. Is, is, is that going to be the end of any more development on the hill? Or can we do another ten units? You know, you know what I mean? Ten houses?
Mm-hmm.
Do you understand what I'm saying? So you did eight units.
Right.
And the pipe is big enough. What if you did another two units? Or another couple of houses get built? The pipe sizes still be big enough to accommodate them?
John can. Oh, sewer, I don't think is a problem at all.
So eight inch main, well, there's no problem. Okay, eight inch main? Is it eight inch main the whole way up Staples Hill? Yes, opposite, but pump house. Eight inch south, pump house up, yeah.
Now, are you talking sewer or water? Hold on.
I'm a sewer guy.
He's talking water.
I'm a water.
Okay.
Cause I know he doesn't milk sewer, that's why I ask. Close to maximum is, are those pipes going to be, what's that development?
I don't know. I thought it was the maximum, but I don't know.
We'll do that.
The developer would have to take care of that issue if it was determined that it needed to be done.
What if a single family, a couple of single family homes went in?
Well, they'd have to deal with that issue, the same thing, same way.
Why, Jody, because that pump house was putting in for four more residents up there. And they chose to not have water anymore. That's not even viable operation.
Are you saying there's?
Residents that have water up there don't pay enough revenue to pay for the electricity from water, it's both out of here.
So you're saying there's plenty of capacity in the water system?
There is. It's already been all the way in Ohio by the airway and air and.
But you said some residents are not part of this water system? Those not.
From that small pump house by Jeff DeGrue's house, they were, and that was put in. And then they chose to get off the water system, and they found that that five hours, two thousand salary, because the rate production. They have to get off the system. But now, not enough residents for Jeff DeGrue's office. To justify even having that system, you know, the light that opened pumps, off the mail event. The revenue to get off the system from there. The revenue to get off the system from there. So everybody that friends put in a well, so then that system will be shut down, reject the rules out. Well, maybe it'd be cheaper, put a lot of the jaws and wells. When you want start well water business. Remember that?
So. Here though, engineer has had, did some calculations on Stagelton?
Where is it documented somewhere? It is. He's had, says he had, they calculated now, all the way.
Well, and we asked about the pressure, because our our houses like went up from the seaters, and we're, if you're gravity fed, we have like. Nothing, like very, very low pressure, so we talked about needing to put in a pump. For that. Um, to get those units enough.
Why Diane's put in a boost up on Vanderbilt? Don't he just ask me about putting in a two inch stuff, and that was a very good idea? Then that big well water expert to know that.
And that's. So what are your next steps on this project?
Uh, well, the next steps would be to um. See if the planning board uh, in the town would grant the subdivision permit. Um, we want to apply for the main housing funding that's available, and the the applications are due in a few weeks. It would say, it would be those um. Either zero percent or very low interest loans for forty years, right, to help build out the inside, um, and that, but that's a very competitive process. So if that doesn't go through, then we then we look at Plan B, which would be some type of individual homes, parcel land to. Condos or townhouses or something.
So what about the sewer, because you're well within the road, so you gotta have to have a pump station?
Yeah.
Do you have one now?
We, I don't think we do, do we have a pump, we have a pump station now for. No, no, for our sewer, from our house that goes, because the way the pipe is actually sunk so low in the ground. That in the corner of our house where all the sewer collects, it can go into that. But from the barn, you probably would have a pump station. And got being below road grade. Use everything.
One other thing I do want to bring up, in the last meeting that we had, when we discussed having this particular meeting today. One of the concerns that came up was vehicle emissions. Um, idling vehicles, things like that, if you have, well, kids are a bit, if you have twelve parking spots, people are letting their cars run. Um, one of the things that we did come up with is, I don't know if you guys have ever shopped at like Lanny Wellhand in Auburn. They've got signs up that say it's a no idling zone, so we've asked Diane and um. Rick, sorry, to uh, to put that in the application process. So that there'll be no idling signs. In for the parking lot, basically letting their residents, so you can't warm your car up in the morning when it's cold out, because it may. Create emissions for the surrounding people, so.
Yeah, so a no idle zone.
Yeah. Any other questions? Right, I'm gonna conclude the public hearing today. Uh, we are gonna be doing our, our uh, planning board meeting after this. This meeting, so if you guys wanna stick around, you can, that's up to you guys. And then I'm gonna figure out a way that I can get Robin off of speakerphone and on the Zoom, so she can join to us, so. Thank you very much, guys, for coming.